Oh. See, you came in late. Wait, why aren't you even on my list?
You did.
Oh, I must show up.
Wow, wow.
I'm here.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay. All right, next on the agenda would be the disposition of minutes. We have minutes from November 8th, 2018, the executive session minutes. So counsel, I think there's, I think there's what everybody, God bless.
Excuse me, thank you.
In terms of being able to approve the meetings.
Everybody here but Mr. Weinstein.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, and Committee Mendelcor.
Thank you. I was going to abstain.
Okay.
Do you remember, yeah?
Okay, Mr. Wagner's not here. Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Estad?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jordan.
Yes. Okay. Next would be a resolution. Is there a resolution here?
Well, it's the chairman that...
The draft.
That's the draft, okay.
Yeah.
So we could go right to the business for this evening, which is the examination of the 2018 plan reexamination report. So just a couple of words before we get started on that. We had a couple of meetings with the subcommittee. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the people on the subcommittee. Mr. Piesin, Committee Mendelcor, I know Chairman Sarachi also was involved in it. So I want to thank them for their time and effort and input into it. I also want to thank Mr. Maske. I thought it was a really good report. So I just want to commend you on that as well.
Thank you.
So I, you know, I hope everybody had a chance to take a look at it. I have certain things and questions I wanted to go over, but I was going to ask you to kind of let us know how you want us to proceed in terms of, you know, just to kind of the procedure tonight.
Certainly. What I'd like to do is sort of walk through the report a bit, just give an overview so everybody's up to speed on it, and then go into questions, comments after that.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, so the goal for tonight, as was stated, is to consider and adopt the 2018 reexamination report. The reason for doing it, the statutory reason, you have to reexamine your master plan every 10 years in accordance with the municipal land use law. 2018 is our 10-year anniversary, so we're due. But beyond the statutory requirement, as the title entails, it's a reexamination. It's an opportunity to reassess the township's land use policies and determine whether or not they're still relevant and reflect current conditions. So I'll start off with some of the basic findings that are in the report. Although there have been numerous planning studies and plan amendments over the years, they appear to some degree to be incremental, reactive, narrowly focused on a specific site or sites, or to justify a specific zone change. The last truly comprehensive update of the master plan was adopted 22 years ago in 1996, when the township's population was approximately 29,000 people, since grown to over 39,000 people. So what I did on page two of the report, and it's also up on the board, it's a matrix showing all the different master plan elements and studies, et cetera, and when they were adopted over the years, going back to 1975. So you'll see in looking at the table that it was a lot of activity in between 75 and 96. Comprehensive master plans were done with multiple elements, but since then it has sort of tailed off. There's a report or two here or there, some amendments, but again, no comprehensive updates were undertaken over the years. So I'll walk you through the different sections of the report now, and you'll notice it's structured to address the five topics that are outlined in the municipal land use law. So at the beginning of each section, you'll see highlighted in blue the land use law language in terms of what that chapter is supposed to address. So the first section is really a look back at all the recommendations and objectives that were compiled over the years and how they were addressed in the 2008 reexam report, which obviously was the last reexam report 10 years ago. It amounted to a lengthy list of 96 good intentions, but offering little or no policy direction. The second section starts on page 15. I should have mentioned it first. If anybody doesn't have one, we have some extra copies if you didn't bring it with you.
We've got.
Everybody have one? Okay. The second section provides a brief analysis of how many recommendations from the 2008 reexam have been carried out, a status report of sorts. The section also looks at the continued relevance of the 96 objectives outlined in 2008. Although many of the subject areas may still be relevant in 2018, for example, natural resources, a clear and persuasive goal statement followed by a limited number of pointed objectives would provide more meaningful direction for future master plan updates. Section two also provides a condensed version of each group of objectives, which is meant to serve as a starting point for the development of new goals. So the first two sections are really retrospective. It takes a look at where we've been over the last 10 to 20 years, and it gets us to a new starting point, which gets us to section three. Section three provides a snapshot of Hillsborough today from both a demographic and a land use context. To no one's surprise, the township has grown substantially over the years, and although the growth rate has slowed, the township continues to grow. I would direct your attention to page 21 in the report. There's a graph and a table showing how the population has grown. So we went back to 1930, when the population was 2,200. There was some slight growth up into 1960, and then you can see how it shoots up from 70 to the 2000s. And it's projected to continue to grow through 2025. Using 2015 as the base year, and if you flip over to page 22, oh, I should back up a little bit there. Nope, we'll keep going. Got to page 22, we look at the density in the township. The overall population density, which is persons per square mile, is 716, which is typically suburban, on par with Montgomery and Branchburg, as you can see in the table. And that table lists the 10 adjoining municipalities. It's not all Somerset, it's each town that adjoins it. So we're on par with Montgomery and Branchburg in terms of our overall density, but if you look at the core density, and when I first started here three or so years ago, I was always fascinated by the fact that when you look at the map, and I'm pointing at the existing land use map, which is in the back of your report, it's a real cluster between the two railroads, 206 here, it's a real, it's a core. We almost have three townships. We have the western and a very rural section of the township. We have a borough, almost, if you will, and you have the sort of traditional suburban southeastern edge of the town. So the core density, when you look at that, it's 3,000 people per square mile, which is on par with Rarodden Borough. So it gives you a sense of how densely populated that core area is, which is actually a good thing. That's why we have so much open space in some of the other parts of town. The balance of the township outside of the core, so if you take the core out, it drops to 474 people per square mile. So it's, as I said, it's a tale of three cities, if you will. Based on the median age, some other takeaways from the population analysis, the population is growing, as is the county and the state, no surprises there. One half of Hillsborough residents worked in Somerset County, this was 2015, and 95% worked in New Jersey, not a lot of people going to either New York or Pennsylvania. The mean travel time to work to Hillsborough residence was 32 minutes. Only 3% of the population used public transportation to get to work. The land use and zoning sections start on page 28. And what we were able to do this time around was to create, as the first or second map in the back of your report, an existing land use map in 2018. And in all the research I've done, I was never able to find one, a real comprehensive one for the township. But it really, basically, it shows you what's on the ground today, based on various categories. So if you flip to page 30. It's a summary of the land use categories. The residential, agricultural, and open space categories are by far the largest single land use groups. Each one accounts for almost a quarter of the township's acreage. So if you look at that table, 27% of the township's acreage was residential, and this is land use, this is what's on the ground. Agriculture was 27%, and municipal and county parks and open space was another 21%. So three quarters of the township is taken up by the residential, agriculture, or open space. The existing zoning districts are summarized on pages 32 and 33. Took two pages to get all these zones in. We have 40 distinct zoning districts in Hillsborough. 13 residential districts, two agricultural conservation, four town center slash gateway, seven commercial office, two mixed use, two corporate, six industrial, two resource-based, and two redevelopment-type zones. Not surprisingly, a number of the zones are redundant with minimal distinctions in terms of permitted use or bulk standards, which points to opportunities for consolidation down the road. I'm going to skip over section four for a minute and go to section five. That's a fairly simplistic section, it's one page, it's just a summary of the existing redevelopment areas and redevelopment plans existing in the township today.
Excuse me, just for the record, Ms. Beccarino just arrived, so she'll include her with the roll call.
Hello. Sally? Hi.
How you doing? Sorry.
Okay, no problem. So I'm going to go back to section four, and to some extent, that's the meat of the document. These are the recommendations. Based on the findings in the other sections, these are recommendations, first, for master plan changes, and secondly, for zoning changes. So I'll just kind of skim through them and try to hit the highlights. On page 37, and these are in no particular order, but first, as I mentioned a little earlier, a new goals and objective statement. As I said, there's 96 objectives organized under 13 headings in the 2008 reexam. The lack of specific goal statements contributed to the rambling nature of the objectives. So I think, starting out with a clear focus, a clear vision of where we want to go, then you can kind of craft your land use plan and all the other elements that go with it. And there's four basic steps to strategic planning. You say, you know, where are we now? What's the current conditions, which we fairly well laid out? Where are we going? In other words, trend, if we don't do anything, this is where we might wind up in 10, 20 years. Where do we want to go? So if we don't like trend, where would we rather go? And lastly, how do we get there? So that's a nice little exercise to sort of set your goals and objectives for going forward. The land use element is sort of the meat of the master plan. These are all separate elements within the master plan. The last truly comprehensive long-range land use plan map for Hillsborough Township dates back to 1980. And just think about how the township has changed in all those years. By the same token, a new circulation element. The last one that was really done was 92, 96. How many new roads do we have? New subdivisions, et cetera. Not counting even for the bypass. Historic preservation element, and the ones with asterisks were recommendations that were also in the 2008 report, so they haven't been done yet. Historic preservation element needs to be updated. It hasn't been looked at since 2001. Open space and recreation plan, again, last updated in 1997. The township has added hundreds, if not thousands, of acres since then to the open space inventory, so that needs to be updated. A community facilities element, again, last adopted in 92, 96, and that's basically looking at the township, you know, are we well-serviced in terms of police, fire, post office, any type of EMS, physical facilities, and are they placed in the right places? So again, looking at the township's makeup, you know, we have a good deal of people in the core. Are there enough services there? Or do we not have enough services out in the western portion? So. And then lastly, a green buildings and environmental sustainability plan element, I think this was a request by one of the subcommittee members, but it basically codifies, if you will, or formalizes our sustainability efforts in the township. So those are the seven master plan recommendations that I came up with, and at the end of this conversation, we would ask, we're going to be asking for the board to adopt a resolution to adopt this reexam report or not, or as is or with changes. So if anybody has another master plan element that they'd like to recommend, or if you guys feel one of these should come off, you know, that would be fine. Zoning recommendations start on page 39. And I'll read you the first paragraph, because it really sums it all up. "The general impression of the zoning ordinance is that it has a number of redundancies, inconsistencies, and gaps that make administration of the ordinance somewhat challenging at times. In addition, the zoning scheme can be described as robust, with more than 40 separate zoning districts. In some cases, the overlaps are obvious. For instance, there are five light industrial zones. Certain districts, such as the mining and the CDZ, are reflective of outdated uses, plans, and policies. Some zones cover only two parcels, possibly remnants of previous zone changes. Some zones are overly detailed with design specifications, while other zones have none. A number of zones exhibit minimal distinctions in terms of permitted uses or bulk standards." So it's, there's an opportunity to sort of clean house, if you will, to go through the various districts and make them, format them in the same fashion, and make sure that, primarily to make sure there's no inconsistencies in the ordinance. That's where we run into problems, where one section says this, it says the house should be painted green, and we go to another section and it says the house should be painted red. So we need to really clean those types of things up. So we gave some specific recommendations, and these are not exhaustive by any means. And again, the asterisk means it was recommended in 2008 as well. First one being, address the potential reuse of the Glengarry Quarry and the Mendel Property. It's one of the last sections of the township, really, that was never really looked at, and it's over in this section here. And corporate development zone right now, and an office zone, things that aren't going to happen. And of course, the quarry is no longer a quarry. Secondly, revisit the transfer of development credit provisions. It's a fairly complex section in the ordinance regarding transfer of development credits, where you transferred credits from other districts into more the town core area. But there was a TDR program proposed at one time, which never went through. So this TDC program appears was sort of a stand-in, but the suggestion is to review it and review it for past performance and the continued value of the program, to see if it needs to be changed or taken out of the ordinance. Thirdly, reevaluate the architectural and site design overlay zone, the ASDO, which covers the entire length of Route 206. It covered, applies to 15 separate zoning districts ranging from residential to industrial. Some of those zones have their own design requirements, and every application that comes in that's located on or near 206 has to go through this ASDO. It's a fairly lengthy design standard. It's my understanding that when it was originally adopted, there was an advisory subcommittee that everybody would have to go through. That committee no longer exists, so we need to look at, I think, the ASDO overall, to see if it, again, if it's consistent internally, if it makes sense, or if it's relevant. Particularly when you're applying the same standards to residential properties and industrial properties, it just doesn't work. Revised the historic preservation ordinance. It's right now kind of overly complex, difficult to decipher. Basically, it needs to be simplified, and that could be done in concert with the historic preservation element being updated, the ordinance could flow from there. Incorporate the existing redevelopment plans into the land development ordinance, that's fairly easy and structural. We have two or three redevelopment plans, but they're not mentioned in the zoning ordinance, so that needs to be rectified. Consolidate undersized and redundant zones. As I mentioned, there's 40 zones. They range in size from 13 acres, the OLC zone, to 9,000 acres, the AG zone. Undersized zones should be considered for consolidation into adjoining zones. Just as one example I threw in here, there are five light industrial zones, the I-1, the I-2, the I-3, the LI, and the T E C D, and one general industrial zone, the GI. Cursory review of the zones indicates minimal substantive differences. It could likely be consolidated into three zones along the lines of light, general, and commercial industrial. Similarly, there are six single-family zones and five garden townhouse zones that perhaps could be consolidated. Seven, revise and clarify regulations pertaining to public facilities and services. An example of this was public utilities, which the township committee amended that ordinance some time ago. It was inconsistently referred to throughout the ordinance. In some places, it was permitted, some places it wasn't, so we cleaned that up. Same here, if you look at municipal buildings, emergency services, police stations, recreation facilities, and schools, they're addressed in different ways in different zones, and sometimes not at all, and you could actually make the argument that they're actually prohibited in some zones. So we need to address that. Review and revise the sign ordinance. About two years ago, the United States Supreme Court made a ruling, it was actually a little sign case coming out of, I believe, Arizona, made its way all the way up. Bottom line was, they say all sign ordinances have to be content neutral. In other words, you can't regulate signs based on what they say. You can base them on size, location, time, but you can't have different regulations based on what the sign says, or what the sign is being used for. So that's something we could work on. Review and update the telecommunications ordinance, if you were here or part of the Verizon case, you know, the ordinance could use some updating, particularly to keep up with the federal regulations that kind of keep coming out in relation to cell towers. Can't play road rezoning, that's just to keep that consistent with the Sherman track, which the township owns. And then there's some miscellaneous zoning provisions. Fences, for instance, and this has always surprised me since I started here, that we don't have more problems with it. There's really no controls on fences, except in some commercial zones, so there's nothing that says how high it can or can't be. All it says is it has to stay out of the site triangle. So we should take a look at the fence ordinance. Accessory structures. We don't have a separate, this is fairly simple, but, as it says, for instance, a detached garage or shed could conceivably be the same height as the house, because there's nothing that, you know, normally, or usually, in other towns, you usually limit a garage to 15, or a shed to 15 to 20 feet high. We don't have that in our ordinance, so theoretically, it could be, you could have a garage as tall as your house. This was a little history lesson for me in the office. Review the former court-mandated developments and related bulk schedules. So over the years, there were 12 what we call court-mandated residential developments, I think most of them having to do with affordable housing, and they each had their own sort of separate bulk standards, separate and apart from the standards that were in that zone. I think it's time we can consolidate some of those. Some of them match anyway, it's the same standard, so we could clean that up, make, again, make administration of the ordinance much easier. Reevaluate the economic development zones. There's still two of them. One applies to the northern parcel of the former Belmain Army Depot, next to the Mountain View Park on the zoning map, which is in, it's this big purple. So it's now owned by the county slash township. We should look at how that should properly be zoned going forward. Also, the other ED zone, it's the, what's now called the midpoint logistics center, formerly known as Veterans Industrial Park. That's also an ED zone. We ought to see if that applies anymore. This is one of my favorites. Rename and redraw the Millstone Valley Historic District. We have the Millstone Valley Historic District, which is on the lower right-hand edge of the town. It's the canal and the state park. Although it includes historic in the name, it's called the Millstone Valley Historic Zone, it's not a historic district. As such, it's often confused with the overlying Millstone Valley Agricultural Historic District and the Millstone River Road Historic District. So it's just a matter of maybe some nomenclature changes to solve that. Lastly, at least on my list, review, reorganize, and update the environmental provisions. There are no fewer than eight separate sections in the ordinance that address environmental issues, ranging from buffers and conservation easements to critical area calculations and tree mitigation. Consideration should be given to consolidating all the environmental provisions into one section. So again, it avoids redundancy and inconsistencies, and it just makes administration of the ordinance that much simpler. So those are 15 recommendations. At this point, Mr. Chairman, questions, comments, additions, deletions, all are welcome.
No, like I said, I think it's a really good job that you've done and we've done. I know it's always a topic of conversation in terms of the master plan itself. So when I was reading it, I mean, a couple of thoughts came to mind. One was, is it, you know, is it a working document in terms of the public and some of the input or the feedback? Is it just kind of worked through the committee? Or, like I said, I know a couple of people have asked me, gee, how do we see the document? Or, you know, how do we kind of, could we provide input? Or does it work that way with the public? Or?
This document or the master plan in general?
I guess both.
Well, this document is certainly a public document, anybody can look at it, and it's, again, it's as much a, the reexamination report itself doesn't change anything.
Right.
It's a look back and a look forward, so to speak, and it's recommendations of things that, and as you saw in here, there were things in the 2008 reexam report that weren't followed up on, so they're still there as a recommendation. Some of these, like particularly the zoning ordinance changes, they would all have to be adopted by the governing body at some point after the planning board reviews them and gives their input. Master plan documents are the jurisdiction of the planning board alone.
Okay.
You'd go through studies, you could open it up as much as you'd like to, to public input. The whole process is open.
Yeah.
But again, it is important to remember that the reexamination report is almost a work list or to-do list.
Okay.
It doesn't change anything. Says, these are things that the planning board, should you choose to adopt, say, yeah, these are things that we ought to look at. Now, some of it, the planning board, again, if it's a master plan study or whatever, you're the one who decides whether or not to go forward with that. Some of it's going to have to go to the township committee. Some of it's going to cost money. But this report is like a starting point. This is where we've been, this is where we are today, here's at least some recommendations, and again, it's not exhaustive, of where we, how we might want to move forward in the future. And then it's a, then you got to do the work.
So who dictates, you know, the time, the priorities? Is it?
Well, if it's a master plan, it's the planning board.
Okay.
Ordnances, it's somewhat two-tiered. Obviously, the planning board could say, all right, we want to change this ordinance to say thus and such, but it's, in the end, it's the governing body that would adopt it or not. Or they could propose that the governing body could, as they often do, they could start the process, send an ordinance down to the planning board for review and comment, and then back up. So master plan stuff, it's up to the board, set priorities and what you really want to see, and then we'd have to look, you know, how can we make that happen? How can we get that study going?
And that's just by kind of working with your office, then, in terms of communication between the planning board and your office?
Yeah, we would conduct this, as I did somewhat with the reexam, I would write chapters, and we'd review them and go over them. I'd get your input in terms of what, where should we be going in this section of the town? town, or what should be our long-range planning for, for additional open space, for, for dealing with the open space we have, for instance. The circulation element, some of that's going to be as much in an inventory as much of anything, but then, all right, do we, how do we connect our grid system? Or are there, there are a number of roads in town that maybe we could vacate. There's paper streets scattered about some of the old villages and hamlets, that sort of stuff.
I mean, like with the mixed-use ordinance as well. I mean, that was kind of like run through the planning board and then the township committee, and, I mean, that's kind of the way things kind of flow.
Well, the, yeah, the ordinance is, they can either, they, they have to end up with the township committee.
Right.
They don't have to start. It could be generated by the planning board, that's happened sometimes, saying, we think this is a good idea, we'll draft an ordinance for your township committee, here, here you go, what do you think? And then they're the, the ultimate authority on whether or not an ordinance gets adopted, but it can, it can be generated from the planning board.
Yeah. I, I think one of the things that has to happen that probably hasn't been as, as diligent over the last several years, you know, each year, we, we develop a master plan subcommittee, and really, that role for the subcommittee should be to take some of the, you know, this reexam report and determine from a planning board perspective, where do we want to focus our efforts? You know, we've got all these lists of recommendations that need to be, or that we should be looking at, that we're agreeing as a board are the things that should be priority, and we should be looking at that subcommittee to help prioritize, obviously working with David's office, to say, you know, this year, where do we focus our efforts? Get a couple of tasks completed and, and continue to kind of work, work the, work the elements on a, on an ongoing basis. But really, set some priorities at the beginning of the year. As we do our reorganization of this board in January, develop a priority list of, you know, how do you want to tackle what's, what we should be looking at for the, for the coming year?
This is, you know, this is a three to five-plus-year program.
Right.
You want to do all of it.
Yeah, agree.
So, right, you got to prioritize, all right, what's the most important? Sometimes it's opportunistic, maybe, and there may be some issues in town that need addressing immediately.
Right.
It may not be the biggest priority from the overall standard, but okay, here's a problem we got to solve today. All right, that's going to, but always keeping in mind perhaps the larger picture, but every now and then, you got to get off the road and deal with a, an issue today.
So, yeah, you keep the subcommittee together, you, you know, set dates, targets, priorities, work with the planning board, the members of the planning board.
Yeah, I think that's probably a great idea to sort of, you know, get a, a work schedule together, and, you know, and even to the point, you know, if, if something needs to be budgeted, you know, all right, this is, this is the plan or project that we want to prioritize, we have X amount of resources to do it, either in-house or we have to go out, out, out house, out to get, get additional help, or whatever it might be.
For any purposes, yeah, whatever it may be.
You just keep it like a working document, just in case, like I said, you need to prioritize something that you might see come up sooner than later, and, you know, you could adjust this or adjust that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but what I think is important is, you know, kind of David's done the, the heavy lifting in saying, here's where we've been, here's where we were the last time we did the report, and now here's some of the things that either we haven't been able to, to get to, or really are the new priorities as we see them, or think, some things, because of changing demographics or changing density or other elements of the master plan that we need to focus on, and now it's up to, to kind of move forward on some of those initiatives. Obviously, you can't do them all at once, you're not going to get it all done in a year, you know, but it's, it's sort of the long-term, long-range planning that we need to be looking at. And this board, obviously, then, if there are things that need to be, need to be moved to the township committee, then we'll, we'll, you know, recommend that they be moved up to the township committee, but this should be the working, at the working level, both with the subcommittee, and then also bringing it from the subcommittee to the full planning board for, for action.
Right. And/or routing it to whatever.
Yeah.
Sustainability, environmental, historic, or, you know, so on and so forth.
Right, that's, that's a good point. There are a lot of this stuff, there's other committees and commissions in town that would have, but obviously, the historic preservation element would have a lot of input from the historic preservation commission.
Right. Okay.
But the roadmap is there, and that's, this is really the roadmap to say, okay, here's the things we, we need to look at.
Absolutely. Okay, I, I'm clear on that. Anybody else have any questions or input?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Maskey. I think it's a tremendous job that you gave us the framework to, to discuss and, and go over this. I think as, as Mr. Delkor said, it may take five years to, to kind of gnaw through all of this, and then another five years to come up with the next set of recommendations on the, every ten years, so I, you know, I hope as I'm around ten years from now, maybe not on this board, but looking at the town that things got done, and I think that's from, from a planning and, and land use element. I know there's a lot of other things that the town, you know, has on its agenda, but I, I think this is, this is great for, you know, for this commission to, to, you know, roll up our sleeves and, and get into and, and take it from here, so. Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, well said, but the, the term commitment on a subcommittee is at least a ten-year term, so I'm sorry. You're going to have to stick around. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd, I would just add too, you know, understanding more about what this is. I think it's great as a framework, and I think you mentioned it's like a checklist, and kind of seeing it through and hearing the overview, I think it is a great start, and it provides a basis for beginning. And I think what you mentioned about a working schedule, I think is key. You know, you have to have that, you know, periodic meetings and go over it, maybe first prioritize, you know, low, medium, high, all the items that you have here, you know, and see which ones do we want to look at first and kind of flesh out a little bit more. You know, how, I think it was mentioned about the impact of the population growth. You know, you mentioned like the core tract in that middle, you know, there's a lot of things popping up there, which makes sense. It's close to the main road and the high school and, you know, but, you know, there's certain spots now, maybe you want to change, it ties in with the zoning, which is another item you have here, you know, and, and the whole change is there. So I think it's, it's great, and it's a great start. And then, you know, just some periodic working schedule, like you said, I think is important.
How, how big is the master plan itself? Is it a thousand pages? Is it?
Well, no.
I just envision like this big.
No, it's, it's, depending on how detailed it is and how many elements, you know, there's very, there's, the land use plan element, which is usually the, the main focus, but, but again, there's three, five, there's six or seven or eight optional elements, most of which we cover in here.
Okay.
So several hundred pages, if you did everything, but.
I think that's about right.
Yeah.
Has it been around since nineteen seventy-five? Like just kind of in?
Well, the last full update was, when was the last full update?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay.
Yeah. Most of these things are actually on our website, on our department website.
It's all available.
Yeah, they're all there.
Okay.
Hey, David, a question for me, because I know in the, in the last exam, we talked about looking at ag and the farmland preservation process. I sat in on the ag meeting this week, and, and there were representatives from the, the state ag development committee attending. I was just wondering if they, I indicated that we were in, in sort of the middle of doing the reexam, and they said they may want to talk to you about that element. I don't know if, if there's anything in here that we need to look at from, that maybe we didn't include from ag or farmland preservation perspective.
Nothing in here specifically, but the, but we have the whole farmland preservation program, obviously, that, that Chickie Haines and Dave Coys pretty much handled, but it, to some extent, it's part and parcel of the land use. The land use element can cover a lot of, obviously, it's all your land use types, so it can be addressed to some extent in the land use element itself. There isn't an agricultural element, per se. It would probably be picked up through other, through other elements. Well, actually, yeah. I mean, there is a farmland preservation plan, which was last updated in two thousand and nine, so that could certainly be, and I think that has to be updated every so often anyway.
Yeah, I think that was part of what they were indicating was, if we're doing the re, it might be a good opportunity to update the mapping and the, and the data from the farmland plan as part of this, or, you know, as a, maybe as a, as a separate initiative, but, but aligned with, with the master plan reexam.
Yeah.
Just like to reiterate what my colleagues said. Did a great job, thank you.
What I, what I really like about this document is if you don't have familiarity with sort of the planning board process, it does kind of walk you through in fairly simple terms sort of where we were, you know, what some of the priorities were, where maybe there were, you know, things that didn't get, weren't on the priority list that maybe we need to rethink about, and now what we want to look at going forward, and to give you a full view of all of the elements that in town we, we should be focusing on. So, and it doesn't, you don't have to, you know, be a, be a land use attorney or planner to understand what's in here. It's, it's fairly self-explanatory, and I think anyone from the public that wants to review it, I think you can actually get a pretty good handle on, on some of the things that are really going on in town and where we're putting our priorities.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I think it's a, I think it's really a document.
Yeah, I think, I think we, we can all agree on that. Excellent job.
So if there's any, I would ask that, I think you all have a draft resolution in your package.
Yeah, would you, is it appropriate to read the resolution, or?
Well, you could read the whole thing or just the gist of it.
So, but before we go to, just if I may, so from here, maybe just talk a little bit about what happens, I mean, we, we pass a resolution, does this become effective? Does it, are there further steps that need to be taken? What happens after that, or is it really just, you know, this is the, is developing the, the draft into a final version from the resolution standpoint?
Well, if you adopt it tonight, we would change, take the draft off, this is the final reexamination report. Now, again, as we said, in some towns, all right, we fulfill our statutory responsibility, and you put it on the shelf for ten years. I mean, like I said, it doesn't change anything in and of itself. It's, it's a report, it's a reexamination, so it's up to the board, as, as you've discussed, how to go forward to a subcommittee, or, you know, starting to prioritize and starting to do the work, really. But, yeah, adopting the report is really, it's kind of the, the first step in, in starting the progress, process.
So beyond passing the resolution for the purposes of the reexam, that's our final step?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Have met your statutory requirement, yes.
Yeah. That's why I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so let me just, counsel, I'll just read it, the resolution?
Actually, you could essentially just ask for a motion by title. You can read the whole resolution, it isn't too long, but really, the operative language is the, a motion to adopt the twenty eighteen master plan reexamination report dated October twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, as prepared by David Maskey.
Okay, then I'd like to ask for a resolution for passage of the draft two thousand and eighteen master plan reexamination report dated ten twenty-six eighteen for consideration and adoption pursuant to NJSA forty point five-five D dash eighty-nine as, as designed by David Maskey, Hillsboro Planner.
I'll make the resolution or motion, whichever is required.
It could be a motion, sir.
A motion, thank you.
I'll second it. Roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Bestag?
Yes.
Mr. Scobo?
Yes.
Just wanted to thank Mr. Maskey for his hard work again, and I'm a yes.
Um, let's see, who's that? Committee window.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for putting me on the list, yes.
And this chairman, Julie.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the next meeting, there are two meetings in December, on December sixth and December thirteenth.
Mr. Chairman, a little record is that there are no members of the public president who wish to, there are no members of the public president, curious, and no members of the public wish to engage in a discussion of the master plan reexamination report.
Okay, duly noted, so we do not need to open it to the floor, then. Okay. All right, well, then, at this point, I'd like to have a, does anyone have a motion to adjourn the meeting, or is there any more business to talk about, or?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You know.